Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Generally Irritable's special election season edition. I'm really excited to be back in Burlington and getting to do some live streams with candidates for city council, maybe even school board. If anybody wants to reach out, anybody watching, if you're a school board candidate or a city council candidate and you are close to center moderate and to the right. So if you're a Republican, if you're a centrist, if you're a truly an independent, I would love to have you on the show and let some people hear about your candidacy. I'm not, I can't lie. I am not a, what is that? I'm, I'm, I am a biased news organization. We here at Generally Irritable are really looking to, to help promote conservative values and, and candidates that we think are valuable, who use reason and data to make decisions, not just their emotions. And so that's, I'm actually really excited to have Alex Stith on tonight. He is running for city council in Ward seven of Burlington. The current city councillor is Ollie Dang. And nice enough man. I like Ollie. We have each other's phone number. We've talked. But I haven't been happy with all of the decisions that he's made on the council. And while I think that it's important to take feelings into consideration and to be empathetic and compassionate, we also have to make sure that the things being suggested are being tracked and followed through and, and, and discover if they really work. And a lot of the things that we're seeing from our current city council and the mayor just don't work. And so when I first met Alec last, I think it was last year, or maybe it was even in 2020, when there was some stuff going on with the bond for the fire station. I was like, this guy clearly is thinking about things. And I was really excited to see that he was running. He is an engineer. And anybody who knows engineers, I'm an accountant. So I like engineers. I, I like to process, be rational, reasonable, logical, right? There's compassion and empathy in there, but let's first start with what are the facts and what is true? And, and so I think that that's something that Alec brings to the table. And so I'm really, really excited to have him on today. And so before I bring him into the live stream, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to my Patreon supporters. I actually, I never promote this stuff, you guys. I, I bring my content to you and I don't normally ask for, you know, like, share and subscribe, but I'm realizing how much stuff, how much that stuff matters. Conservative content especially does get throttled in, on social media. It really does. So your, your likes, your shares, your follows all really do make a difference. And what else makes a difference are my Patreon supporters. I have Kurt Wheeler and Keisha Gathwright are both monthly supporters on Patreon. So after we get done, I'll try to remember to put, no, I'll try. I will put a link, a pinned comment in the, in the comments section for people if you can, and you're able to be a monthly subscriber, even at $2 a month. That really goes a long way to helping me transition from being a full-time accountant, having an accounting practice to being able to produce content and the news around the state of Vermont to you, my viewers. So blah, blah, that was awkward. Eventually I'll be less awkward when asking for things and asking for money. I better get good at that. Speaking of getting good at asking for money, I wonder how Alec is doing with his fundraising. Alec Stith, welcome, welcome, welcome to Generally Irritable.
Well, thank you, Erica, for that wonderful introduction. I appreciate it.
You are welcome. I want to make sure I don't like, you know, anybody watching is like, oh my God, Alec is a Republican. I didn't say that. Okay. I didn't say that. You are running as a Democrat. Is that correct, Alec?
That is correct. However, I did receive the endorsement of both the Democratic Committee and the GOP.
Okay. And that's because, you know, we of the, of the Republican Party, the Burlington GOP, I, I've said this before, I, I don't care. I don't care if you're a Democrat. I don't care if you're a Republican. I don't care what you are, if you can do math. I will vote for you.
That I, and I appreciate that. Yeah. I'm an independent minded person and you know, math is right up my alley, analytics and you know, being a data-driven person and, and understanding that you have to be pragmatic is, it's kind of in my nature. And that is really what getting an engineering degree is all about. It shows that you can think analytically.
Oh, I like it. Okay.
That's, that's really the, the, oh, still down. No, no, no.
Okay. Okay. So Alec, um, why don't you take a couple of minutes and, and do your like introductory pitch, right? I'm Alec. This is what I'm about. I got a family. They're cool. You got a great picture. You got a good looking family for a record.
Appreciate that. I, I love your pictures. It's all, it comes all from my wife, you know, that, that, so, but yeah, no, my name is Alec and I am an engineer. And my wife and I moved to Burlington over a decade ago and we've lived in the new North End now for a number of years. And prior to purchasing our house, we lived in the old North End for a decade and we saved in a very small apartment. And we did that so that way we could afford the down payment on our house here where we want to be and start a family. And since moving here, we've had two children who are both awesome. I have a daughter and a son. And my daughter being the younger of the two and the newest addition. And my wife is now a stay-at-home mom for the time being to raise our family. And that was a decision that we made together. She's taking a leave of absence from her job and she was a school councillor prior to doing that. And so we planned this and it took a long time of sitting, saving and thinking and budgeting and really understanding where can we live within our means, where we want to live in Burlington and we've known we want to live in Burlington. We know we want to stay in Burlington. And being able to plan that out and save and then move here has been really just an amazing opportunity that we're incredibly thankful for. And so now, you know, I realized I wanted to, to get involved after talking to a couple of my neighbors, they approached me independently about the state of the city and the state of the council and things that are being brought to the council that don't necessarily fall under a local view or under the purview of the city council and maybe divisive things and, and other things that didn't make a lot of logical sense. And what I really would hope to do is bring that civility and local focus back to the city council. And I'm passionate about a few things, you know, the environment, public safety, you know, being affordable. And I think that that really resonates with a lot of people because we want to stay here. You know, we want to be able to live here and grow our family and have our children grow up here. And that's important to me.
That is, I love to hear that. I have been very blessed to be living in the home that my mom grew up in. You know, this is, this is, this home has been in my family since it was built in 1963. And so I just, I love that family focus. And that, and that idea to me, that's like thinking about the future and thinking about legacy. And how do we take care of not only what we have to do now, but also make sure we set it up for the next generation?
Exactly. Exactly. You have to look and have that foresight into decisions that you're making now, how will they impact the future? And that can be anything from, you know, we put solar on our house and that was one of the first things we did as well as weatherizing our attic and adding insulation. And I'm a mechanical engineer, so I like to do a lot of that work by myself, but through the supportive nature of Burlington Electric and Vermont Gas, you know, they have programs that you can take, take advantage of. And it wasn't just thinking the now, it was looking at what's the return on investment for the, you know, solar, for example. And after seven years, it's going to be paid back. And you look at the rising cost of electricity and things and not just the cost, but how is it good for the environment? And so, you know, you don't want to waste energy. So we insulated our attic, we air sealed it, we did ventilation. We put the, you know, solar panels on, switched everything to LED light bulbs because it's, it's the right thing to do, but it also is making the house more comfortable. And those types of programs I think are incredibly valuable and, and things that we should look at. Those are low hanging fruit things.
Now I have to ask though, a lot of those programs are paid for by tax dollars. So actually that comes, that makes Burlington less affordable. So while those programs are good in that they help people, if it makes Burlington less affordable, do you think that we should continue to support those kinds of measures?
Well, that's a complex question because while you can say it would make it less affordable, you yourself, if you take advantage of it, are kind of getting your own money back and then it would pay itself back with the offsets that you would gain. So if you have an incredibly leaky house and you're wasting a lot of energy, then insulating and air sealing can save you a lot of money, you know, and solar off that, that again, you know, the investment is large. That's a federal, you know, kind of program, but the, the net metering, you know, that helps pay you back and then you have a return on investment. So while some of those programs may increase the cost, you have to look at the overall net good and then overall, what does it do for you personally? So I know for me, when I did the analysis on my house, it was beneficial for me to take advantage of that program. And overall it saved the environment as well, which is something, you know, you don't want to waste energy.
Okay. Well, I'm good. We can, we're going to argue about this, but hold on, I'm getting a weird, any of our viewers that are watching, are you getting an interruption in the feed? I'm getting this weird feedback over here that says interruption and signal. Can somebody comment? So hold on and but before I forget, anybody watching, this is not a one-way conversation. If you have questions for Alec, put them in the comment section. And if, and if they're good questions, as long as you're not being rude or crazy, I'll read your question and have Alec read it. I've, I never have weird viewers, Alec, just for the record. But you know, every once in a while people get all hype, like when we're talking about this stuff, because I'm gonna, I'm like, I want to argue with you about the Vermont gas thing, because we did, we did that. We had the energy audit. They said it was going to save the whole house about $200 a year. So that's me and my tenants. No. And guess how much it was going to cost me?
Oh, probably $6,000.
$14,000.
Yeah. So that payback is rough. That, that wouldn't make a lot of sense.
Literally 80 years.
That means that your house from a weatherization standpoint is already where it needs to be, you know? And if you look at the city, the city has a goal that, that they're trying to reach. So if you look at the, the larger picture of that and see the forest for the trees, you know, the overall benefit out of some of the major egregious, you know, houses that are leaking air or, you know, could use this, the overall net goal is positive. So that's where, that's where it kind of is, is an individual, you know, I know, I see you looking at me. It's, it's kind of individual.
Giving you the stink eye, Alec.
No, it's good. It's good to have disagreements. And you know, going back to when you said questions from, from viewers.
Yeah.
Is, I will take any feedback from anybody, whether it's positive, negative or indifferent, as long as it's constructive. Feedback doesn't kill you and should be welcomed with a thank you. And I'll say that, that first and foremost.
Yeah. Well, and you know, I'm always going to say stuff like that is bad, just for the record. And just because I am a small government conservative. And so I think anytime that you're taking, and I'm very libertarian. So I'm the girl that puts hashtag taxes are theft on half my videos and like abolish the Fed and stuff like that. So let's just start there. Okay. We have one question from Michael. This is not a serious question, but I'm going to, and he can't vote for you. So just for the record, but.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. It's good to answer questions.
I, but I'm going to, because Michael picked for, and anybody like this is, this is not a paid advertisement. Michael Valdez, Top Cat is awesome driver. I have him pick me up from the airport whenever I'm flying in or out. Cause it's just nice. He's got a nice car and it doesn't smell weird and he doesn't play bad music. And he's professional. He's like an actual driver, like not like an Uber driver. I mean, like actual like driver person that's paid for it, like legit. So anyway, so I'm humoring him. He said, what's your favorite kind of taco? Beef or chicken?
I don't know. I mean, if, if only those two choices, that's all I, that's all I get. I'm going to go with a beef taco in that case.
Yeah. I think that wins. I don't know if, what Michael's going to say, but that would be my choice. No, seriously. Okay. Um, let's see. Brian says five by five currently only one interruption. I don't know what five by five means, Brian, but you said only one interruption. Okay. So that's good. So whatever it's doing on this, on my screen is not continuously happening.
And to be fair, I don't see anything on my screen.
Okay. That's good. Michael says chicken. You're wrong, Michael. You are dead wrong.
You know, I appreciate his input. I, you know, you can't please everybody, but I appreciate his opinion.
Yeah, we're vetoing that one. No, but seriously, one of the things I really like about your platform, I'm going to go to your, I'm going to share your website with people. Oh, here we go. Here we go. So public safety, housing and affordability, local focus, environment. Okay. So local focus, we, you mentioned a couple of times, I think. What is, tell us a little bit more about what you mean by local focus.
Yeah. So what I mean is not bringing forth resolutions that are on a state or on a national or international level. You know, keeping politics for Burlington in Burlington and keeping it serious, you know, not bringing forth the non-binding resolutions or the like, or even discussing subjects that there is no influence from the city for.
So like, so like if, since Burlington City Council is about governing Burlington, you should be focused on Burlington.
Correct.
And, and I, I actually really appreciate what you said about being serious and the non-binding resolution stuff. To me, that's political theater and really kind of a waste of time for the city council to be doing.
Yeah, I know. A lot of people feel, you know, talking to them that the council is fractured and, you know, it gets distracted and sometimes divisive things get brought up that really don't serve the people well. And it should be about the people and for the people. And, and that's what the city needs to focus on. Keep it small and keep it about the city and bring that civility back and that focus back to the local politics that really are what should be discussed and the only things that should be discussed. And that, that's what I, that's what I mean. So make it less of, I guess the, the people don't feel that it's taken seriously, you know, or that it's not about them or for them. And you know, I, I think we need to get back to that.
Well, and I almost am of the mind that local politics shouldn't even be partisan.
I agree.
I know some states, some places it's not. And personally, that would be my preference. I'm not really sure what a D or an R or an I or an L or a P or whatever behind your name matters when it comes to needing to make sure that the water stays on.
Exactly.
Our infrastructure doesn't fall apart.
It, it doesn't matter what the letter next to your name is. What matters is making the right decision for the community. And that's why the GOP, as well as the Democratic Committee, both support me because it doesn't, it doesn't matter. It shouldn't be partisan. It should be whatever is the best logical decision to help the city move forward.
I like it. Okay. So tell me about this first one, this first quadrant. That tells me that's important. I might be reading into it, Alec.
Public safety is very important and it's on the forefront of a lot of people's minds, myself included, you know? And the way that the public safety initiative for cutting the police through attrition went down, I do not believe that that is the right way. I think a lot of people see that it was not the right way to go. And if you think about it, the plan should have been in place for refunding. If you're going to defund long before the defunding accord was pulled on that. So you know, if shifting funding over to mental health and substance abuse is the right plan, and that's what say the CNA report or other communities or, and other communities that are similar sized went through, that's wonderful, but we need to have the plan in place. We need to have people trained and ready to do the job. So when officers do leave through attrition and we get down to the number that is recommended or what we think or other people think and the data shows that we should be at, those positions are full and ready to go. The dispatchers know who to call, who needs to be at a given situation is ready and trained. There's a long lead time for training on any job. You know, I'm a manufacturing guy. So there's a long lead time on raw materials and getting people trained and you have to think about those things. It's not an instantaneous backfill.
I wonder if you've ever had to do this where like, when I've had to implement a new accounting system as an example for a client, we run both systems concurrently. So we don't just stop using their old accounting software and then just start using the new accounting software. We, there first has to be like a download of the information. Then we have to double check that it's not corrupted and that it's good. And in the meantime, we're still doing all of our regular accounting in the old system. And then we're slowly making sure this new system is working correctly.
Exactly.
All the bugs are worked out. And then once we know and it's, and it's running alongside, then we switch.
Exactly. And, and my company did that when we transitioned to a newer ERP system from an older system, you know, you run them concurrently. You bring the stakeholders who are involved to the table and you actively engage them to gain their feedback and listen, actively listen to what they're saying and how we can mitigate the risk when we do transition into a new system. So we do that, you know, in, in work, we do this and we should do this in life and this, we should do this in the way the government is, is run. Plan to check act, you know, PDCA, those, those types of methodologies, same thing with say double loop management, where you get your feedback back and you make adjustments and you move. Those are the fundamental principles of making solid data-driven decisions.
What do you think? If, and I'm, I'm totally asking you to speculate here and so you can decline to answer. But do you have an idea of why this was so hastily done?
I, I can't speculate because I can't get inside other people's heads. Yeah. So I really can't comment and I, I wouldn't try to, to do that because they have different views, different opinions. And you know, those same opinions should be listened to and understood, but I can't speculate as to why they were made without getting, you know, without that, you can't be in somebody's head.
Right. Exactly. And I, I think that that's what, you know, for me, I, I don't want to speak to motive, but I will say it seems like our city council makes a lot of emotional decisions. People get very emotional about a topic one way or another. And it's like, it just has to be done right now. Instead of like, no, let's work this out first and make sure what we're saying is, is reasonable.
Correct. And you have a plan in place to actually act on, you know, you plan it, you do it, you check it, you act it, PDCA, you know, I'll go back to that because that really is a way to make a data-driven decision. And you know, then keeping with a consistent pattern for voting on the city council or making decisions, you know, with regards to public safety. And you know, you can't jump back and forth and try to go to two different sides. You have to own the decision you make and then use data to drive yourself forward, listening to the stakeholders and improve. And, and that's the, the whole crux of it is to try to do what is right to improve the community.
Well, and I think what was, what was additionally alarming about that whole situation is once we saw what was happening and the, and the mass exodus of, of Burlington police, which I can't blame them for the record. Like I wouldn't want to stay in a police force where I'm hated and degraded by the people that I'm meant to protect. And then the people who are meant to stand up for me also demean and degrade me in public.
It should be a partnership. It should be a partnership between, you know, every department in the city and the people, not just the police, but every department.
And not to say, and again, like just to be really clear, if there are people acting badly, they should be dealt with. So well, I just want to say that. Like once we saw things were going badly and like, oh crap, crime is going up and like, oh, and we don't have cops to deal with it. Like they still didn't want to do anything about it.
Yeah. And I mean, you see that on posts on front porch forum or the new North End, you know, bicycle thefts, car being, cars being broken into people's houses, even being broken into, you know, smaller level crimes or lower level crimes. But that makes people feel invaded. It makes people don't, you know, not feel safe in their own house. And they have to double check their cars are locked. They have to, you know, install cameras or motion sensors or security systems. And this is Burlington, you know, and people say that can't happen, but you know, you see the posts and it's almost a daily occurrence for people saying, my car was broken. My car was stolen. My bike was stolen. People were walking up around my backyard and that makes you a little uneasy.
Well, and think about all the, you know, the, the older folks who live alone and can't necessarily defend themselves and single women, not to say that guys, you know, are like singled out, but like you guys are less likely to be victimized. If I'm a bad guy, I'm going to go after the little ladies or the little old lady or little old man, you know, and like, I was hearing, and I live on the bike path and I kept hearing from the police that doors are getting kicked in and people are robbing people on the bike path. And I'm going, where am I?
And a lot of it is crimes of opportunity as well. People going around car doors, opening any, any unlocked vehicle. But that's not the community that you want to foster, you know, and you also want a partnership again with your police force and with other departments in the city. You should be looking at it as a partnership, not an adversarial relationship.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. Okay. Michael says for being a good sport to the question, you get a free ride from Top Cat Express to the airport.
Motive, you know, you see the real motive. I appreciate that. Smart advertising by, by Michael. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I'm not flying anywhere recently.
Well, maybe he'll give you another ride somewhere else sometime. Maybe you want, if you want to go out on a date with your wife somewhere and you can make it fancy.
Bring the two small children right with me, you know.
No, you get a babysitter. No, what are you talking about? Okay.
We got a few more years before then.
Okay. So here we go. We got housing and affordability. So we touched on that. You talked about, you know, wanting to, you know, what you and your wife did, the decisions that you make and how you made, excuse me, and how you set yourselves up to be homeowners in the new North End.
Yeah. And then, you know, to dovetail onto that, you know, we can, we grew our family, right? So we had my son and then we said, you know, we want, we want two children. We wanted a four, you know, four-person family. This house is, that we purchased is a little small. It's a, it was a two-bedroom home, which is modest and, and great. And we said, hey, you know, we have an opportunity to expand this to being a three-bedroom home and subsequently did that. So now we have a three-bedroom, you know, bedroom addition on there. And part of housing and affordability is increasing the housing stock, but it's also changing some zoning regulations that would allow people to, you know, construct additional dwellings, you know, accessory dwellings or expand their homes. If it's lock coverage percentage or setbacks, you know, looking at things like that, how can you incentivize people to improve their houses? And how can they grow if they need to, to stay in this city? Cause that was one of the issues that we had. Well, if we can't expand it, we're going to end up buying a house and selling it and moving into another one where we could have, you know, a little bit more room for each one of our children, but we didn't want to do that. We want to stay here. And fortunately I had a, I had a friend who was a contractor. I hired him, paid him and you know, he didn't give me a discount, but I paid him. And then I did a lot of the finishing work and, and other work by myself. And at night and on the side, I did that while I was going to, to graduate school. So it was a lot of fun, a lot of dust. And it was, it was good, but I have that hands-on experience from, from jobs prior. So.
I love it. I, and I love to hear you say dealing with some of the zoning because it is ridiculous and it is outrageous.
And you know, Merle, Merle Weinberger, you know, for, you know, you may like him, you may not, and that, that's okay. But he did put forth the plan to increase the development of housing stock by relaxing some of the zoning regulations.
Uh, yeah, except Merle Weinberger has also directed their city attorney to force us to remove one of our three units. So this is what, we're literally being punished. There is a rule, a 60-day ordinance that says, if your, is, if your unit is vacant for more than 60 days, you lose whatever special use permit you have. So we've had a triplex here since 1963. And so because several years ago, my family did a full renovation on one of the units, new floors, new kitchen, new cabinets, new bathtub, new sink, new bat, everything. We are now being forced to remove it because it took more than 60 days.
Yeah. Well, well, I can't speak to your specific, you know.
City, hold on, hold on. So Sarah Carpenter, Ollie Dang and Mark Barlow all refused to talk to me about it. And so does the mayor and they refuse to do anything, even though they know and acknowledge how stupid it is.
Well, again, while I can't speak to your specific instance, I would say that anybody should be listened to and heard and at least listened to. So that, that's really all I could say, but changing zoning to allow things maybe like yours. Again, I don't know the exact specifics on yours, yours, your case, but allow people to utilize their property in either adding a unit, because that could be a unit that could help somebody.
Oh yeah. I have to evict my tenants.
I spoke to another, another. I spoke to another another gentleman who.
I'm going, let me be clear, how they don't want people to evict and they want people to be good landlords and not be slum lords. And not evict people. They are forcing me to evict my tenants. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I understand. Again, I I don't know your, the specifics of yours, so I can't really make any comments as to why.
Whatever you can. I want you on the ordinance committee. That's what I I'm like making Alec. I'm making a personal request that you request to be on the ordinance committee.
You you know, that's one thing about being nonpartisan is also no, no special treatment for anybody.
No. Stupid rule. You have to admit that's a stupid rule.
Yeah, I, you know, that that rule of it's vacant for more than sixty days, it revokes a special use, that that may not make much sense. So why, why do you need a special, you know, we could get into this, why you need a special use uh instead of it just being, I I don't know.
Because we're in a low density residential area.
Yeah, so changing some zoning, changing some zoning and allowing things like that would be something that should be looked into, you know. Uh allowing people to build on their homes to expand so they can stay here. You know, I spoke to a gentleman who was interested in having a uh a detached garage. He wanted to change that into an accessory dwelling. And he said, well, you know, I don't think with the zoning, I'd be allowed to do that. It's like, well, that could add a unit or a short term rental that could provide him income as well as tourism dollars. So not something that necessarily should be done, but should be looked into and at least discussed. You know, that's part of being innovative is not coming up with something new, but using what you have in new ways.
Well, and I think it's really also what we talked about earlier, which is uh, what did you say? Plan.
Plan do check act.
Checked. Check. Are these rules that you implemented having the desired effect? That they were implemented for? I I sincerely cannot imagine for one thousand years why a rule like that would have been implemented. I I really don't. I maybe I I really can't. I I can't, I literally cannot think of one reason why that would be a rule. Um.
You know, I I.
But.
My head, I can't, but I'm sure there was a reason and understanding what that is would be beneficial to find out if that reason is still valid.
And that's what I'm saying, like, whatever reason that you implemented this, maybe there should have been carve outs. Maybe there should have been like, oh, this is only for whatever or blah, blah, blah. And I'm not just talking about my rule. Um, I'm actually working on a documentary to uh really highlight all the ways that Burlington uh city zoning and stuff. Is actually uh demonstrably harming uh normal, middle class, lower class folks. A good friend of mine um is actually now selling her property because she, it's like, I'm over it. They had uh one of their apartments in uh one of the old um houses in the old North End, so like downtown area. Um, one corner of one room was a quarter inch too low. So not the whole apartment, not, not even a whole room. One corner of one room was only six foot eleven and three quarter inches. And they forced her to remove that housing unit from the house.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, again, without knowing exact specifics on rules in that for that specific situation, I I can't really, I can't comment. But what I can say is, you know, expanding housing stock expands the tax base, you know, building new units. Allowing people to stay in their homes, build additional rooms, build accessory dwellings. Where applicable and where it makes sense allows the tax base to expand. Tax base expands overall, you know, money taken in by the city is spread out.
Go up. This is what I'm saying. Oh, my God. See, this is what, see, see, I disagree with you about some stuff, right? But you can do math, Alec. This is what I'm talking about.
Businesses, right? Incentivizing people to start businesses in Burlington, you know.
Well, and this is because what what is actually happening is the rise in in taxes and these zoning laws that are absolutely stupid. In my opinion, I'm not supposed to talk like that. My husband told me to stop calling things stupid, but they're stupid. Um, what that does in, what it has the effect of doing is causing people to leave. Um, you know, how many families just keep leaving because they can't afford it anymore? Or it doesn't make sense, or they can't expand their home, or they're on uh fixed income. And the tax increases are too much, you know, fill in the blank.
Yeah, I know, and people are stinging from the reappraisal right now.
And we're getting a couple more bonds on the ballot in March.
Yeah, one more bond, uh I believe is going on the vote on Monday as well as a tax increase.
Which is wild to me. And the school board budget is going up thirteen percent, which I know that has nothing to do with you. But I just, I I say to myself, what are these people thinking?
Yeah, so it gives you even more, you know, of an idea about how we should be drawing businesses into the city and expanding our tax base in general.
Yeah.
And that that's, that's one way to keep it affordable, as well as looking at places where you can be more innovative with, you know. Your resources that you have in the city or departments in the city. You know, what are you, you know, you're looking at your, your overall operation, where can you be more efficient?
And this is what I, what what is so disgusting and shocking to me is when we're all, like you said, stinging from the reappraisal. I can't imagine what was going through them and and many of us had our businesses shut down. We lost money, we lost jobs, people got sick, et cetera, and so forth. And how irresponsible it is for our school commissioners. And our city councillors and our mayor and the department heads to think that increasing, asking for even more money from us. Would be appropriate.
Yeah, you know, so I can, I can see both sides of the coin though on that one, because certain things, if you, you know, the bond that's coming up uh that they're gonna vote on. Uh tomorrow i- is are necessary things or things for public safety. Now, is it the right time to ask more money or did you, did they ask for money for things in the past? You know, you can't change what they asked for in the past and what passed on the, you know, I keep saying passed, but it's what has passed uh through the voters. If the voters approve it, that's what the voters approve. You know, so some of those things, if you read them in the bond are are viable, right? You know, upgrading.
Why, I I I've read it, but why is it the response? Why would the city think it's okay to ask for more money from us instead of cutting their budget? And living within their means, just like we as homeowners and business owners have to do.
I think it should be, you know, twofold. I think first you should be looking at where can you gain efficiencies and how are you using your resources? And then, once you hit that level of efficiency that you feel like you can't really go further on, that's when you should approach and and look. You know, we do that from a manufacturing standpoint. We're not going to install a new uh, you know, twin screw extruder. When we have capacity that we could gain through efficiency on our existing machines.
This reminds me, somebody was supposed to send me the detailed budgets. I gotta write this down so I don't forget. I'm going to audit the city budget. I'm gonna do a detailed audit of the city budget and the school board budget. Um, to actually highlight some of that stuff, because I think people really don't understand what we're spending our money on. Um, and frankly, personally, when the city is spending money on things like flower pots and bike lanes. And we're still having sewer back up into our basements and uh and we have crumbling infrastructure. Like, why are we spending money on art stuff? I I, I'm an artist. I benefit from those things. We've gotten artistic grants. My husband's an artist. But when the city, when the people who live in the city can't afford to live here anymore. And the taxes are so outrageous, why do you think it's, why do you think we spend money on things like? Art, like city art or public art displays or flower pots, like, so that's what I. I just don't understand how somebody can say we want Burlington to be affordable. And then also be for for taking money, more money from people to pay for pet projects. Like bike lanes and stuff.
Yeah, I think you need to s- to look at what you spend money on and you need to spend it on the right thing at the right time. I mean, while those projects may be good projects, they might not be timed right to spend money. But overall, you may want to do those types of projects, but you have to make sure that you're spending the money wisely when you do spend it.
Yeah.
You know, it can't be austerity measures, you cut your budget, but it has to be things like, you know, hey, if a, if the bike lane makes sense uh or city beautification. To draw people in. Do you spend that money now when you have, say, you just said, oh, sewer backing up? You know, what is the, what's, what's the the highest, you know, risk that you should spend on to mitigate before you?
Oh, I will like.
FMEA, you know?
Well, I can say like, no money should have been spent on the McNeil redo, uh not McNeil, I'm sorry, the frickin' stupid.
Moran frame?
Yeah, like that crap. Uh, we never should have redone the city hall park. Um, if we have, if our infrastructure is so bad that it's backing up sewage into people's basements.
Then those are the things that should be focused on first.
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I've gone down a total rabbit trail with you, Alec.
It's, it's really.
Some of it's hitting me right now, how silly it is.
No, it it's really about fiscal responsibility and transparency and choosing the right projects at the right time. And those projects are things that, you know, people want to do and I respect that.
I get it.
When you want to do them and and when's the right time to do them is a, is a different, different story.
This is what I'm saying. So you know what, you like, you want, you guys want to redo the Moran plant? Cool, fine, whatever. But get private money to do it or do it not when we have sewage backing up into our basements. I'm one of the people who had sewage back up into their basement, so um, but it's not just me. I know a bunch of our neighbors have had it happen.
Well, you know, like the police and fire department need uh new communication equipment, you know, so things like that, that enhance public safety, you know, those types of projects. Or, you know, we have, the city put forth a really nice uh, you know, climate change action plan. But like the firehouse has single pane windows. So, you know, we need to walk the talk and not just talk the talk as as a city. And it's looking at where are we going to gain, you know, the best, the biggest, biggest gain for our dollar.
Yep.
What's the right thing to spend on at the right time? And and that's, that's that pragmatic approach.
Okay, so do you have an actual question from one of your actual possible voters? Um.
I like all questions. It's, it's good to ask questions.
Okay, um, oh, wait, hold on. Okay, wait, I'll start with this question. Okay. In an effort to complete my home efficiency faster, would Alec support changing some requirements in programs for efficiency? Which require you to use contractor of their choosing and just. Wait, okay, hold on. They said my home was pretty tight and I didn't need, so I think what he's asking is, hold on, Ray. I want to make sure I'm getting your question exactly right. I think he's saying that for the efficiency, they have to ask. The city chooses.
Uh, yeah, no, I think what he's saying i- i- and correct me, Ray, if I'm wrong, you're asking if I would support people doing a DIY approach. Rather than having to choose a contractor on a list to complete the projects.
Right.
Yes, I absolutely would, as long as you can meet the, you know, the requirements and you have the skill set able to do that. And that's absolutely something you should be able to do, you know. I did the insulation and air sealing uh in my attic. I opened up the soffits on my house and put in proper vents and opened the ridge vent up on the, up in my attic. And I did that by myself. I constructed the uh, you know, a sealed hatch for my, my drop down attic hatch. And the city came, you know, not the city, but uh, you know, Vermont Gas came out, did a blower door test on it and then came back and and showed that efficiency gate. Now, if I didn't get to where I needed to be, then I would not have qualified for for the program. But yeah, I think being able to do that work yourself, as long as you have the level of confidence and can complete the work satisfactorily. I don't see why you would not be allowed to do that or should not be allowed. You know, you shouldn't be forced to hire a contractor if you can, if you can do the work. That's like, right now in the city, you you know, you need to, you you have to pull a permit to to change a light switch. But you don't have to hire a contractor to do that. You can do that yourself. Uh, any work in a panel, you know, needs a contractor. And it's dangerous, you know, if you, if you don't know what you're doing, you you do run the risk of hurting yourself or others. And and I see why certain things are there, like you have to hire a licensed electrician to work inside of your panel. But you don't to change a ceiling fan, but you need to pull a permit for it. So certain things like that, is that necessary to pull a permit to change a light fixture? You know, according to the zoning right now, it is. But, you know, you're not adding a, you're not adding a whole new circuit. But to to his question, yes, you know, air sealing, insulating, doing those efficiency projects, uh, you know. You don't need a permit to blow insulation in your attic.
And especially Ray is a contractor. That's what's funny. So. And that's what I'm saying.
I mean, you shouldn't need to choose one, you know, off that. I I think if you can do it yourself, uh, they should foster that because that's that spirit of, hey, I want to do better. And you want to improve your house, not only for yourself, but people want to do it because it's the right thing to do for the environment, you know.
Well, and Ray, just for the record, Ray's awesome. Ray, I love the threshold from the the family room to the kitchen. I haven't gotten to tell him this personally, but since he's watching, I'm gonna give him a shout out. It looks so pretty. I came home and it's so pretty. Um, anybody who needs somebody to do work on their house, Ray is awesome. I shouldn't tell the whole neighborhood that. Because then he's gonna be too busy to come do so.
So is this like the, is this like the, you know, the driver, he's gonna say, hey, now you get one free contract.
No, 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 no. No, Ray is, Ray is, uh, Ray is awesome. Um, for pe- people who don't know Ray Ingram, um, he's been a very good friend to me since I moved back in two thousand and eighteen. And he's just really um, really kind and really good at what he does and he really cares. But I swear this isn't an advertisement. I, this is totally not planned.
But you know, allowing people to do that, to raise point, you know, would help the city get more towards that goal, which everybody is trying to, you know, the city. I say everybody, but the city is pushing and a lot of people are trying to push. So incentivizing people to do work on their own and not hire a contractor, that might be a barrier to entry to some of these weatherization projects. Is having to hire a contractor. And and a lot of people may want to, and that's great, but if you want to take the project on on your own. You know, I was up in my attic in uh August, you know, uh, it was very hot, but uh, we got it done.
I um, I, it's so funny, uh, Christopher Aaron said Miro doesn't budget well. And I'm not, I'm not gonna ask you to comment on that, Alec. Um, I will just say, it is, it it is interesting. Because I think this is what I've re- I think I've sort of noticed or realized. Um, about Burlington particularly is that um, I heard this expression called pathological compassion. And it's like, we want to be so compassionate that we go overboard sometimes. Like, um, I've asked even Miro publicly, like, or, you know, out at events and stuff. I'm saying, why don't you cut the budget? You know, why is it that city uh, city employees actually make more than the average Vermonter? Um, why is it they have better uh benefits packages and salaries than an average Burlingtonian or Vermonter? And he says, well, Erica, what do you want me to do? Fire people or reduce their salaries? And I say, yes. Like, I I don't understand why someone who whose salary is paid with tax dollars should make more. Than the people who pay the taxes. Um, you know, maybe if you're some, if you're the city engineer and you're the one building the roads, maybe that guy gets paid more. Um, but I just think that we are so, we are generous to a fault. Um, and we just want to help everyone and we just want to try to make everyone's existence comfortable. And I I just don't think that that's a reasonable goal. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I mean, if if people are doing a really good job, you know, the people in, say, the DPW, or, you know, then we should be incentivizing them to stay. And do a great job and paying them, you know, if they've been here and they're working hard, then then that should be something we do pay them for. You know, you you want to, it's just like in in private industry, you know, people get raises every year for cost of living. If they're really a good worker, they get incentivized to stay and to be a good worker. You don't want people leaving their jobs, whether it's in the city or private industry, to jump to another place. Because they feel that you didn't treat them fairly when they do a good job, you know. And and my philosophy is that the goal should never be to fire people. It should be to develop them and try to raise them up. You know, so if you have people who are working really hard, uh, that's, that's awesome and they should be rewarded as such. So, you know, you have.
As long as it doesn't increase my tax dollars.
Well, yeah, but you guys, you know, who are, who are on the recycle truck in snow, in the middle of snow, you know, on the, on the DPW guys. And and they are plowing the roads and they're working long hours and they're there at night and they're, you know, allowing you to get out of your driveway. And, you know.
Yeah, very.
In the training, it it takes a long time.
Jobs. I agree, but like, police officers only make like fifty grand. Why is it, why is, why is somebody who works at a desk in city hall making more than a police officer?
I can't, I can't comment on that because I don't have specifics on it, what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if they have, say, that person there has been there 30 years uh, and they have been doing a fantastic job. You know, if you're at a job for 30 years, your, your wages are going to increase.
Then I would encourage you to go to the private sector where you can make more money.
I'm just saying, you're not going to be capped, and you're not, you know, it wouldn't be fair to say to somebody, oh, now that you're making more than this because you've been here 20 years, you're fired. Uh, that, that wouldn't be fair. That wouldn't be equitable to people, and I don't-
I, I just don't think those salary caps should even be that high.
And that's a separate, that's a separate question on that. But, you know, there are a lot of jobs that are done.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
There's a lot of jobs that are done that are difficult jobs. You know, police officer i- is a difficult job. And, and I would encourage people, you know, counselors, if they're going to be voting on things relating to police, they should do ride alongs, you know? Same thing with the DPW, maybe go down and do a ride along with those guys filling potholes or taking out recycling and understand what those jobs are like and, you know, how you can help those people. And then fire and police and, and everybody, give them the right tools to do the job. Ensure that they have the tools necessary to do the job and listen to their feedback. You know, when you make a decision, bring them in with you because those guys are the stakeholders, those, those men and women. And, and that's important to listen to that feedback. But if they're doing a great job, then they should be rewarded as such. The lead time for a police officer, even so, you know, it, lead time for any job, people in DPW, firefighters, that lead time for training and proficiency is long. It's long. So you don't want people to jump to another municipality or another, or into the private sector when they feel, if they feel slighted, you know? You want, if they're doing a good job, you want to reward them for that. I mean, maybe you want them to jump, uh, and we can disagree on those things, but from a pragmatic standpoint-
We're going to continue to disagree on that because otherwise, then the budget just keeps going up and up and up and up and up.
And, and that's exactly how it is in the private sector as well.
And not only that, but these people are all, uh, members of, of public sector unions. So they use their money to get politicians elected who then decide what their salaries are. And so I think that there's a really perverse relationship, um, with public sector unions. Um, I, I personally don't think that they should exist. I'm going to get hated for this, saying it out loud. Um, I don't think public sector, if, let me, let me rephrase that. I think if, if public sector unions want to exist, they should not be allowed to use money. Uh, they should not be allowed to donate to politicians.
And, and we can, I, I don't want to go off the rails or, or off this type of a discussion. But, uh, what I will say is that, you know, if the people are doing their job well, then they should be rewarded. And the long lead time for people, you need to incentivize people to stay and to do a good job. If they're doing a good job, they should absolutely be sincerely thanked and, uh, you know, provided that growth and opportunity. And again, it's a partnership, right? With everybody on all departments, uh, you know, and I look at this from, from my point of view, working in the private sector and the, the plant that I work in, is that you want to partner with people. You don't want to have that adversarial relationship. And ideally, you're giving everybody the right tool to do the job and finding out from them. That's that double loop management. You know, you listen back to them and find out, do you have the right tools for the job? And gain their insights and gain their thoughts as stakeholders.
Um, Ray said they won't provide financial assistance because a homeowner was doing the work. Wow, that's wild.
You know, those are things that should be looked at because if you want to incentivize people to move towards that goal, you know, it's telling them, you know, Ray may, maybe doesn't want to hire a contractor because he himself is a contractor or because he doesn't have the, the funds to be able to do that. And therefore, he may just end up living without that weatherization that hurts him, that hurts his, you know, comfort level, and it hurts the, the movement towards the city's goal.
Well, and I'm curious because my understanding is a lot of those weatherization items are, are, are going to be made mandatory. And so it's one of those things where, um, again, where the city council and the mayor say things that sound good and they sound positive, right? We all, I don't, I don't know anybody who doesn't want to have a nice, clean environment and air and all these other things. Um, but there is a, an ability to pay or not pay. Um, so as an example, if I, if, if this were made mandatory and I had to pay 14, I, I, we don't make money on this house. Like, just to be clear, it is so expensive, uh, to pay. Our taxes are out of control and, um, we could raise our rents to full market rate, but we don't because we have a first responder and a social worker in one unit and a single mom in the other. And so we want to provide affordable housing, and so we pretty much break even every year. And if I suddenly have to come up with $14,000 because these thermal energy updates are made mandatory, um, I mean-
You're going to push it forward. I mean, you, 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 you're not going to take a loss on it. I would logically think that you would not take a loss.
What do you mean?
Like, you wouldn't just cover the $14,000.
I can't cover the four, I, I personally can't cover the $14,000. So I would be forced to raise rents at least to market and then, and then try to figure it out. I guess maybe, I, I did, I did, I did a comedic short called The Homeless Landlord. Anybody can go watch it on my page. It is silly, and I joke that I go live out on the bike path because I can't afford to live in my own house. But we're quickly getting there. Um, the capital bond is going to increase taxes for sure. Um, and it, they're, they're, they're telling us that this new capital bond is going to increase taxes.
Definitely, if you looked at the schedule, it, it's, you know, out at the end of the bond, it lowers your taxes overall, like, at the end.
I've never seen a decrease in my property tax bill. So I don't know where that money goes to, but it, it'll be another bond that they issue or some other thing. So not once in the 63 years that my family has owned this property have my, our property tax bill gone, has our property tax bill gone down. So, um, but to, it, again, it's just, we say that we want to have Burlington be affordable, um, and yet we don't act in any way close to what would keep Burlington affordable. And I just think that that's, that's, that's disappointing.
Yeah, I know, we want to stay in our house for a long time. Uh, you know, we didn't, we didn't buy this house just to be a starter home and flip it after, you know, X amount of years. We want to stay here. We want to raise our family here, and it needs to be affordable for us to do that.
Amen, amen. Okay, well, I've been giving, I've been beating you up, Alec, beating you up, talking about stuff. Um, no, seriously.
It's always a good, it's always a good discussion, you know? You know, listening to different people's opinions, different people's questions are how you make progress. And again, I don't take feedback personally. Uh, I don't take actions, you know, people, you can say whatever they, whatever they want. That's their freedom, you know?
Yeah.
And feedback to me, as long as it's constructive, I don't mind if it's positive, negative, or indifferent. It, feedback is, feedback is great. The only thing you should say is thank you.
And we get so, it's easy to get stuck just talking to people who agree with us. Um, and then we don't really understand why the other side thinks what they do. Why do they think that? Why do they think that's a good idea? Okay, yes, that sounds good, but what about this? And, and it really requires, to me, I think, more than anything, what I would like to see is some diversity on the city council. And I don't, and I mean ideological diversity. Um, where an actual debate can be had where people disagree, and then we can come to a consensus rather than just running all the way off the cliff without anybody saying boo about it.
I agree. I think it should be nonpartisan, and I think you should be willing to bring, you know, different ideas to the table and hash them out, discuss them. And then whoever concerns that decision, bring those stakeholders to the table and give them a voice and listen to them, actively listen to people.
Yep.
And bring that civility back, but keep it local. You know, don't look at it on that, that state or national level. If it cannot be influenced, if it's outside of your circle of influence, then don't, don't worry about it.
Ooh, oh, I was going to give you crap, but I won't. I was gonna, I was gonna give you a gotcha, but I said I wouldn't do that to you, so I'm not going to. Um, but I'll ask you in private later, next time I see you. Um, okay, so we've come around the hour, and I want to give you an opportunity to, um, take a couple more minutes to just, um, you know, give your pitch to Ward Seven. Um, you really, you, we do have some of your voters on here with us tonight, so this is really cool.
Well, that's awesome. You know, I'm glad people, so thank you for coming out and, and listening to me. I don't, I don't seek the spotlight. It's not something that I ever, I ever wanted, uh, but when it's necessary, I felt compelled to step up. And, you know, having neighbors independently ask you if you would be willing to put yourself out there, it's kind of nerve wracking. But, you know, ultimately, if it, if it can improve the lives of the people around me, that, that's the goal. So if you want pragmatic leadership who will listen and actively listen to people and use that analytical, data-driven, plan-do-check-act methodology when making decisions, you know, understanding the human side of the equation as well, then I think I can bring that back to the council, that civility back to the council, and keep that focus on what really matters to the people out here. Because I'm one of the people out here, and my family wants to be here. We're very happy to be here. We plan on being here for a long time. And again, if I can help other people with that same vision and that same want and desire, then that's, that's what I will do. And that's why I decided to, to throw my name in there. And, uh, you know, it's been a really interesting time, and I really look forward to meeting more people, understanding people's concerns with the ward and with the city, and how we can focus on issues together in a nonpartisan partnership type view with everybody to make progress in the city while keeping it affordable and moving towards the city's and, and the citizens' goals inside the city. So thank you for listening to me, and, uh, I appreciate that.
I like it. All right, boss. Um, we will let you go for this evening. I wish you good luck in your endeavors and your race. Uh, your website, let me see, let me get back there. Make sure everybody knows, I'll make sure that this is all in the description. Whoops, you don't want that. Do, 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 okay, alexstith.com, A-L-C.
A-L-E-C-T-I-H, yeah.
Yep, I like it, easy, straightforward. So you got your platform, say hi to his good-looking family. Look how good-looking they are.
You know, and the last thing I will say is my name means helper of mankind. My parents picked that for a reason. I aspire to be that way.
Ah.
You know, and, and I'm, you know, you asked my wife about that. It's, uh, it's something that I think if you can leave the place better than when you had it, then that's the way to go. Uh, so, you know, that's something that I, I think is important to me, uh, whether it's, you know, the environment or economically or socially. I think that that's, that's just something. It's, it's just try to do your best every day. That's all you can do.
Excellent, excellent. All right, Alec, I'm going to let you go. I'm going to take you out of the live stream, and I know you probably have babies to get ready for bed.
I have a two and a half year old who is probably sitting on the edge of his bed waiting for me to come in and rub his back.
Where's my story?
Exactly, exactly. It's the saddest thing, but it's also really, you know, it, it means a lot. He, he just, he'll wait for me, so I love it.
I love it, I love it, I love it.
Thank you so much, Erica, for having me on your show. I do appreciate it. And again, alexstith.com, if anybody wants to check that out. As always, feel free to reach out, send me an email, send me a message on Facebook. If you have any questions, I am available, uh, and I'd love to hear from people. And it doesn't matter if you live in the ward or not, uh, you know, I'd love to hear from you and just ask questions. It's, I'm always willing to listen.
You got Thursday, before we go, you got Thursday nights, right? You're doing a live stream or something?
Thursday and Saturday, uh, every Thursday and Saturday till Town Meeting Day, I am doing a virtual happy hour. Uh, so I am a home brewer, so come on, have a virtual beer. I'll have a virtual beer with you. I, I have an IPA that I have right now, so-
Ooh, okay, is that on your website?
It is on my website. I'll have a new link updated now. The last one I just did was Saturday, so come on by. We can talk politics, we can talk beer. I want to listen to your concerns about what you think, uh, and anybody's invited. So ask me questions and, uh, just, we can get to know each other. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good night, Alec.
Have a great one. Bye.
All right, everybody, thank you for being here with us this evening, for listening, for, uh, checking out Alec, listening us to get to a debate about some of the tax stuff. Um, anybody who watches my channel, watches my feed, knows, uh, that I am a small government conservative. And so to me, that means a lot of the things, uh, and services provided by the city government, state government, federal government, really should be provided by you and me. Uh, we should be taking care of our neighbors, not expecting some bureaucrat to do it for us. So, um, that is always going to be my stance. Uh, but I do really like Alec. I like the way his mind thinks. I like that he reasons through things, and, um, and you should vote for him. You should vote for him on Town Meeting Day. Um, and so as we leave this evening, uh, I'm going to leave you with our, another, uh, another, uh, viewing of our commercial for our book. Benjamin and I, uh, have our book published, Reasons to Trust the Government. Of course, it is a very, uh, light read, and you should make sure to check the preview before you buy it. But you can go to amazon.com for $9.99 and be an owner yourself. All right, everybody, thanks for coming out tonight. Thanks for being here, and, uh, don't forget to go, uh, say hi to Alec and, uh, ask him questions, make informed decisions. Night, everybody.